It is eight thirty and I'm going to call our county commission meeting to order. Please stand for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
This is a time and place for an invitation for a citizen to schedule a time on the commission for an item not listed. Do we have anyone here that wants to put an item on the agenda? Do we have any changes to the agenda?
I do have a couple of additions. I have a travel request that was added that is in front of you this morning. And then, I think, I think that's all of the, that's all of the additions that I have, yes.
The agenda is approved. We'll move on to regular business. And I would entertain a motion to appoint an acting state's attorney.
So move.
And the motion is?
Motion is, well, as you stated, personal action to name an acting state's attorney, Terry Nezville.
Second.
Any discussion? Call the roll.
Johnson?
Aye.
Krogman?
Aye.
Bartley?
Aye.
Pierce?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Then I would entertain a motion to approve a personnel action notice for Terry Nezville as acting state's attorney.
So move.
Second.
Any discussion? Please call the roll.
Krogman?
Aye.
Bartley?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
Pierce?
Aye.
Motion carries.
And next, I would entertain a motion to appoint Attorney Steve Brightsman as part-time deputy state's attorney for Brookings County.
So move.
Second.
Any discussion? Call the roll.
Krogman?
Aye.
Bartley?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
Pierce?
Aye.
Motion carries.
And last, I would entertain a motion to approve a personnel action notice for a part-time deputy state's attorney for Steve Brightsman.
So move.
Second.
Any discussion? Please call the roll.
Bartley?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
Krogman?
Aye.
Pierce?
Aye.
Motion carries.
And Judge, I think we're ready for you.
I state your name.
I, Terry Nezville.
Being duly appointed.
Being duly appointed.
To the position of state's attorney in Brookings County.
The position of state's attorney in Brookings County.
Of Brookings County.
Brookings County.
On the sixth day of February two thousand eighteen.
On the sixth day of February two thousand eighteen.
You hereby solemnly swear.
You hereby solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the state of South Dakota.
And the Constitution of the state of South Dakota.
And that I will faithfully discharge.
And that I will faithfully discharge.
The duties of deputy state's attorney. The duties of deputy state's attorney in Brookings County, South Dakota. For the best of my ability. To the best of my abilities. I state your name.
I, Steve Brightsman.
Being duly appointed.
Being duly appointed.
To the position of deputy state's attorney.
To the position of deputy state's attorney.
Of Brookings County, Brookings, South Dakota.
Of Brookings County, Brookings, South Dakota.
On the sixth day of February two thousand eighteen.
Sixth day of February two thousand eighteen.
Solemnly swear.
Solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the state of South Dakota.
And the Constitution of the state of South Dakota.
And that I will faithfully discharge.
And that I will faithfully discharge.
The duties of deputy state's attorney. The duties of deputy state's attorney in Brookings County, South Dakota. Brookings County, South Dakota. To the best of my ability. To the best of my abilities. Thank you.
Much, Judge Stoltenberg, for coming over. We appreciate it and congratulations, Terry and Steve. We will move on to our consent agenda. Today, on the consent agenda, we have approval of minutes, approval of travel and education requests, approval of personnel action notices, and approval of the human services report. But we have a motion on the consent agenda.
So move.
Second.
Any discussion?
And that does include the one travel request that I put in front of you for Mr. Hill.
Call the roll, please.
Johnson?
Aye.
Krogman?
Aye.
Bartley?
Aye.
Pierce?
Aye.
Motion carries.
On routine business, we have a motion regarding claims.
Move approval of the claims?
Second.
Any discussion? Call the roll.
Krogman?
Aye.
Bartley?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
Pierce?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Department head reports. Let's start with Registered Deeds. Is she not? We won't start with her. How about you, Dick? Shall we start with you?
Good morning. There's a couple of things that'll be coming up later on the agenda, too, that I'll just try to make this short because I'll be involved in those. Basically, we've been doing our normal maintenance and procedures, getting ready for bidding our supplies and everything for 2018. Also, I've spent a lot of time looking at House Bill 1107, which will kind of clean up some of the wording of statutes that apply to roads and bridges. It passed all the way down through the House. So basically, it's just bringing it up to current language with quite a few statutes. The one that will apply to us probably a little bit is they're changing the clarity of the wording of when a township might make a request for the county's participation in share, cost sharing of a large culvert or a smaller structure. What they, what they're doing is currently, the statute states that township pays the first $500. The county is responsible for any amount over $500. As amended, they want to change it to the township is still responsible for the first $500, but the county and the township will come to an agreement as to how the costs above $500 will be either, will be handled, basically. It could be shared, it could be one or the other picking up the rest. But that helps enormously because in the old statute, there was words like may and shall and hopefully and cross your fingers and stuff like that. And in today's world, it does need to be defined a little bit better. We also have later in the agenda a permit for putting a manure line parallel to our road. And there's also a amended to the statute that will include manure lines and stuff under the same criteria as utility lines, rural water, different utilities. I don't have that with me and I wish I did, but that will possibly coming up, too, where we might have to take that into consideration, that that's a, gonna have different criteria involved with dealing with those. Currently, we do it just at your request of what you would approve or disapprove. And that would still hold true. However, they would have the ability to put like a blanket one like a utility company would if they wanted to come in and make it countywide. So without muddying the water or, you know, until I get a little more definitive on what exactly they're doing, and it's not towards the end, so it might have some amendments yet, I'll just give you the heads up and keep an eye out for that one. But all in all, with the bridges, it, currently, Brookings County does a lot of the things that they're requesting that you do in the future, hiring an engineer to design your bridges, your repairs of those bridges, different things like that. They're just, again, kind of clarifying and repealing a bunch of the vagueness in some of the statutes. So it'll be interesting and we'll see also, when you have your March meeting coming up, I'm sure they'll go over these pretty extensively, too, because by then, they should have passed and been agreed upon or not. So just food for thought. And that, I guess, is all unless you have some questions.
Thank you. Register of deeds report.
Good morning. Stacy, we've got the report here for 2017. And in 2017, our office generated $360,526. If you want to follow along on the spreadsheet that, labeled number one, their spreadsheet, the first line is transfer fees. And we had $146,180 in transfer fees. And as you probably know, their, transfer fees are, or the exempt codes are required on deeds, and the transfer fees are based on a dollar per thousand of the purchase price of the real estate. The second line is general fees, and that includes the filing fees for real estate documents, UCC financing statements, and location notices with $160,617. We actually had one location notice this year. That's the first one in two years. The third line is marriage licenses, and we issued 245 marriage licenses at $40 each for a total of $9,800. Next line, the certified copies are birth, death, and marriage, certified copies of those, and the fee is $15 each. We issued 2,701 for a total of $40,515. Copies and discs is the final category, and that is the copies of the PTs, which is the physical transfers that the Farm Service Agency in Brookings and the Farm Credit Service in Watertown get copies every month. And that is just the information that's on any deed that transfers ownership. Also, any copies that the title companies make, and then just miscellaneous copies that perhaps some of the public come in and just have something they needed a copy of. And for that was $3,414. After that, I've just kind of, I've broken down the different categories. The general fees is broken down into the, what came in as filing fees, UCCs and location notices. And then the third section is the breakdown of general fees. With the tech fees taken out, which is that $5 per document, that $2 goes to the state and $3 goes, stays here in the county. Under August, I've got the little note there of what the state sent to us as our share. It was $4,685.45 this, this year. And that is from that $10,138 that we sent to the state. Every county does that. And then it is divided equally among the counties so that the smaller counties have a chance to keep up with the technology and things that we, as registers of deeds, need to protect our documents and such. The next one is the UCCs and location notices. And then the certified copies is broken down to the birth, death, and marriage for total. I then broke it down because we keep, we keep $5 from each birth and death certificate that we issue, and we keep all of the $15 from the marriage certificates. We keep that here in the county, but this, and then the, so we have, keep $18,650 this year from the certified copies we issued, and we sent the state their share at $22,450. The next section is what we kept for the local domestic abuse shelter of the marriage licenses that we issued. $30 of each of the marriage licenses goes to the local domestic abuse shelter, and then the county keeps $10 of, of that $40. I broke that down. And then the last section there, I just put everything that actually stays here in the county. And we actually kept $320,588 of that $360,525. I then included a comparison sheet as to, as to how the money that we took in this year compared to last year. We actually went down over $26,828 is what, we were less than last year. Last year was a, or 2016 was, was a bigger year, as you can see, because I put 2015 on there, and we were close to what we brought in in 2015. And the final spreadsheet is just a comparison of the number of documents broken down for what we took in each, each month, and the county tech fee and the state tech fee. Kept that all separate. So, any questions?
I don't know if anybody else has a question. I want to thank you for the report, but I have a question on something that's not the report.
Okay.
Could, could you just update us on where we're at on electronic recording, what your plans are, and how we're moving toward that?
I, I have contacted SimpliFile, and we'll be, that's a company that I think is, has the most, if you want to call them clients, you know, that, that submit documents to us from across the nation. So that's the company that I would like to go with.
At our last statewide meeting, there were a number of counties that are doing the electronic recording now. Are you hearing good things?
Yes, I am. I don't think that the volume of electronic recording was what, is what they anticipated, but I think that probably will increase as the more vendors find out, you know, that, who is accepting.
Do you have a timeline for Brookings County, or?
Really, it's a process, you know, because you have to do a lot of contracts and stuff and whatnot with SimpliFile, so I really can't tell you how long that's gonna take.
And I was just curious if any of that's gonna show up in your budget when we get to budget.
There shouldn't be anything, there shouldn't be any cost to the county. It's the, the vendors that submit their documents to go through this SimpliFile. That is who pays anything. As for any cost to the county, there should not be anything. It's just we have to sign the contracts that, you know, of our agreements and stuff. But as for costs, shouldn't be anything.
Did anyone else have any questions for Beth? Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Marty?
Good morning. I'll be brief, if that's possible. Anyway, I just want to say congratulations to our new state's attorney and our assistant state's attorney. Not to age Steve, but we go back to the 90s. And I got 80s probably, yeah. Yeah. And he's city attorney for most of the contract towns, too, so it's, so I think we work pretty good together, except I got more gray hair than he's got, so he's, anyway, welcome. So, just quickly, we're down in, which is good, 24 inmates right now. I don't know how long that will last, but that helps staff clean and get, do things that we don't normally get to do. The 24/7 program still stays with a lot of participants. We have 158 on the 24/7 program. 59 come in twice a day, so that's 118 people that come in twice a day. I have 16 on SCRAM that comes in once a week. We have drug patches come in once a week, 15. And then I have, we have 61 on UAs, and some of them come in twice, twice a week. So the jail continues to stay busy. Now, on December 7th, we started the East Central Behavioral Health, started coming in at eight o'clock in the morning till noon to visit with any inmates that want to, want to talk with East Central, either on chemo, dependency, or mental illness. And since December 7th, there's been, they've had 34 new inmates that have visited with East Central Behavioral Health. So I think that's a start to try to help them, because it's difficult, you know, especially once they get on meth. Now, if you notice, we're showing something a little different on page two of the report I show. We're showing the no-shows and fails of some of the participants on the 24/7, and some of it is on the UAs. You can see that there was 19 individuals that were put on UAs that didn't show up. And the reason probably that they didn't show up is because they're still below hot. You know, it's, once they get on the meth and the opiate type stuff, it's hard, hard to stay off, see? So then the state's attorney's office gets those reports, and eventually, if they do show up, they usually show up a few days when they probably think that their UA will, will be clean, but in between time, the state's attorney will be probably issuing warrants for some of these individuals, so. Another thing that Bart Siewie, the jail administrator, had, has met with Terry, a state's attorney, we're gonna try to track, and maybe she can explain it better with her report, too. We're, we're gonna start tracking mental illness a little more. We can track the ones we sent to Yankton. That's, that's easy. But there's a lot of individuals that seek help or whatever that don't go to, to Yankton. And we're gonna try to track some of those numbers, too, because I think those are important when we're trying to find ways to help individuals with chemo dependency and mental illness. And so we're gonna try to do a better job of tracking those. And I think with the Mental Health Task Force, I talked to Dan Hanson, who's on city councilor and also on the task force, and I think those numbers are important for them, and also for, just for making sure that we keep our East Central behavioral places, you know, with funding, and maybe we can show the state, because the state's attorney deals with a lot of individuals that come in asking questions about family members for, for help with mental illness that, that don't, don't go to Yankton. So, you know, we're just gonna start tracking, get a little better idea. And also, we're gonna work with the city police and the university police to try to get their numbers, too, because we, they deal with individuals, too, that don't go to the point of, of going to an involuntary committal, just to try to get a little better handle on that, so. Other than that, I, February 8th, this week, we, we have our historic preservation review for the jail on Thursday, right? Eight o'clock, or five o'clock, five o'clock on Thursday. So, other than that, if you have any questions. Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Ricky?
Morning.
Morning.
In your packet, you should have received that I've been in contact with Burridge Peterson on the tax deed properties, both in Bruce and in White. And they did a cash market analysis, which was included in your packet. And they haven't gotten back to me as far as dates, but we will be setting up a time for a sale. And he was going to check with the rest of them. I'm working with Tyler Burridge, and he was gonna check with the rest of them in the office, but what he was thinking is, he thinks it would be better to have the auction at the site, and maybe both on the same day, so maybe like 10:00 in the morning, they would go over to White and sell that property, and then by noon, be over at Bruce. But they haven't came back with any dates, so as soon as they do, we will let you know that, and you can decide if that is how you want to handle it. But that, we've been in contact and got the first steps done, so we will be moving towards selling those properties, because we did declare them surplus and determined to be sold at public auction at the January 16th meeting. So we are moving forward. And I did receive the CPI, the Consumer Price Index, from the state. And for taxes payable in '19, it's 2.1%, which last year, it was 1%, and it can be anywhere from 0 to 3%. So I felt like that was a pretty good figure for us to use. And we don't have the growth yet until the abstract is approved from the Equalization Office, assented to the state, till that's approved. And we won't have the final figures for the utilities until the fourth week in August. But that will give us a start. I have let the cities and townships know what the CPI is, because they need that for determining what their levies will be. And also, yesterday, we received the bank franchise tax, and that was $85,000 less than it was last year. And the county's portion was about $19,000 less. So we're gonna be a little under budget for that, but it does fluctuate from year to year, and it is what it is, but that is, we have received that. So that will be apportioned out now this month. And I've been watching legislation. I listened online. They had a bill, House Bill 1195, which was a refund for the license plates. If somebody comes in and buys a license plate in error, right now, we give no refunds unless it's commercial. If they come in the same day, we give refunds. And this is state. And this is statewide. But there is legislation out there now to give a refund. The legislation that is out there is for a year, but they are looking at changing that till 90 days. It did pass the House 11 to 2, and it is going to the Senate. And I think there is going to be a couple amendments to that. So I'll keep you updated on that. And there's also a Bill 1190, which would move the license plate life from five years to 10 years. And I did listen to that. They did pass it, but they are going to do some more checking. They figure like maybe 10 years is too long for the reflective, or you know, the reflective finish. And Iowa's plates are 10 years. So they were going to check with them to see if they use the same type of thing. 3M has the contract with that. So I'll keep you updated on that as well. And this morning, they are hearing House Bill 1147, which is on tax deeds. And it's like a 50-page document. It's cleanup, and it's also increasing the admin fee that we can charge from $5 to $10. So I'll let you know again on how that goes. And also, there's going to be, I think it's tomorrow, House Bill 1158, which is personalized plates. And they will go into a special revenue fund, the proceeds from that. So we have a lot of motor vehicle bills this year. So I'll kind of keep you abreast of how those are all coming. Any questions that anyone has?
Just on the surplus properties, do you need a answer from us today, how to move forward? Or are we going to schedule this?
If you have any, I would like your input. I just hadn't gotten any dates or anything from Burridge Peterson. But we did decide to sell it. It would be good to know your thoughts if you think it should be sold on-site or what your thoughts are.
I think on-site, what you recommended.
We did that when, in Sinai, and I really felt like it was a good, good process. Instead of being right here on the, you know, we used to do it on the courthouse steps. And I do think it is a good process too. And that's what they would prefer. So.
You always get more bidders on-site.
Yes. And we've had a lot of interest in the one in White, and we've had some in the one in Bruce. So, you know, they would do the advertising and everything through Burridge Peterson.
Could, could you just refresh my recollection on what we do? They've appraised it, and I understand that, we have to do that through the statute. But does that work as a no-sell price or anything at the auction? What do we do with that bid? Or that?
It really doesn't, but we still have to have it appraised. Every time that we've sold something in the last few years, it's sold for more than what it's appraised. But, you know, we've, whoever, whenever the property is sold, the proceeds go back to the entities that are involved. So it, you know, like in White, it would go to Dubrook School, White, the county, and also the Water District. But we have to sold them for what it goes for.
So we don't set a no-sell price on those?
No, no.
Any other questions?
I think move forward and find a date that Burridge will.
Okay. And hopefully, I'll have some dates or a date that you can approve at the next meeting.
Okay.
Okay, everybody okay with that?
Sounds good, thank you.
Thank you. Misty?
Good morning. I just have a few things to update you on. January 24th, I attended and helped out at the South Dakota State Department Ag Booth at the Farm and Home Show. There wasn't a whole lot of questions, but there was some. Friday, February 2nd, I attended training for the Category 6, which is my aquatic license. So I, I will have that updated on my license. And then February 7th, I will be attending the Women in Leadership in Stacy's Place. She's not able to make it. February 8th, I will be going to Watertown to help out with that farm show, just for one day. And then February 13th through the 16th, Tim Bauer and myself will be attending the Weed and Pest Conference in Rapid City. Otherwise, I don't have anything else, unless you've got questions.
Any questions? Thank you.
Thanks.
Mr. Hill?
Good morning. Today, we have our pipeline safety luncheon, for those of you that RSVP. And that'll be over at, and if you didn't RSVP, we could probably still sneak you in. This evening, we have a planning meeting, and we got three items on the agenda. And one of them's an appeal to the Board of Adjustment. And we'll see how that goes, and we'll give you an update at the next meeting on, on those particular items. Other than that, I did go out to Pear for the Brookings Day at the Capitol. We had our holiday event, which went well. We had another joint jurisdiction area meeting. And at this time, where we're at on that is, we, we proposed changing some of the lines on the joint jurisdiction area. And right now, they're doing a inventory, a drive-by inventory. The first planning district is, and they're in the process of driving around. And they may stop by my office to take myself or Richard with them at certain times, trying to get an inventory of what's in the joint jurisdiction area, so that we can keep that process going. We had a 911 meeting. Our state and local agreement has been turned in for the first quarter. I got a copy of it over at my desk. If you want to see it after the meeting, I'll be more than happy to share it with anybody that would like to look and see what was signed and submitted to Pear. Along with the SLA for 2018, Pear has sent us, South Dakota Office of Emergency Management has sent us some information that they're taking a look at the state and local agreement funding. Basically, state and local agreement funding is a pass down of federal dollars from FEMA down through the, through the state, down to the local, local governments. And they're looking at changing the funding. And there's at least two different scenarios out on the street right now. One scenario would have us losing about $6,000. And basically, I told them, we just, we need to know by, by June, when we start our budget process, of what, what final numbers are going to be, so we can do our budgeting process. So right now, we do not know what the decrease in the funding is going to be. It's still fluid at the state level. And once we find out, I'll be more than happy to, I've been working at the Commission Assistant Department Director in the Finance Office, Officer, and we'll keep the board informed as soon as we know something else. I talked to the Highway Superintendent about the POD trailer, Points of Dispensing Trailer, that we have to, or we've been requested to move. And we will move one of those, or allow one of those trailers to set into the highway shop next to the command trailer. We have to do some rearranging of some other trailers, but we will, we will accommodate for one trailer over there near where my, my trailer is parked at now. And with the caveat that if something comes up and the highway department needs the area, we'll have to find another place at a, at a later time, which, which we can probably do. We can get, we got the vehicles. If we need to move it, we'll move it wherever we need to, need to move it to. We don't need a key to get inside the vehicle. We just need to make sure they don't lock the tongue on it, so we can't move it around the motor pool if we have to move it. We've got a PPCC meeting scheduled this Thursday over at the East Fire Station. We got a Local Emergency Planning Committee meeting scheduled on February 15th over at 3M. We got the Brookings Home Show coming up. Typically, my office and sometimes the sheriff's RSVP, or and sometimes the sheriff himself will stop by. We do consider that a county booth. So if any other county entity wants to put something on the display table, you're more than welcome to. We do it through the Local Emergency Planning Committee because we, it's one way to get our, our message for the Local Emergency Planning Committee out to the, to the public. And there's a lot of different, different groups come through the home show, and that's why we do that there. And that funding is pulled out of the LEPC grant that we get. This coming Saturday, I'm going to Wentworth. They've got a, it's called a Responding to Flammable Liquids Transported by Rail Class, taught by the Pipeline Hazers Material Safety Administration. So I'm going to go over to Wentworth and take that course. It's a one-day course on Saturday. And the other thing, we are looking at getting a storm spotter training in Brookings. I haven't been, we've submitted a date to National Weather Service. I don't want to give you the date until it's confirmed, one way or the other. And if we do get that, I'll go ahead and, and let everybody know that, and we'll start advertising that. And on the radio discussion, we had some radio discussions. That's a 911 meeting on, on various radios. And it looks like I'll go ahead and order the radio that I've got in my budget for 2018. I haven't ordered it yet, but I will at this time. Any questions? Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we'll move on to routine business. And our first item is a, is the first reading of Ordinance 2018-01, An Ordinance Establishing a 25-Mile Per Hour Speed Limit Upon a Portion of Brookings County Road 23. And the proposed ordinance reads, "An ordinance establishing a 25-mile-per-hour speed limit upon a portion of Brookings County Road 23, be it ordained by Brookings County, South Dakota, whereas pursuant to SDCL 32-25-9.1, the Board of County Commissioners may determine and establish speed zones upon all or any part of the highways under its jurisdiction. And whereas the Board of County Commissioners has received a request from the City of Aurora, South Dakota, to reduce the speed on a portion of Brookings County Road 23 due to a change in the northern boundary of the city limits, and it appears necessary to reduce the speed limit on a portion of Brookings County Road 23 to provide for the safety and welfare of all residents and travelers on such road. Therefore, be it ordained, that a speed limit of 25 miles per hour be and the same is hereby established on that portion of Brookings County Road 23, commencing at 268 feet north of the intersection of Brookings County Road 23 and Spruce Street in the City of Aurora, South Dakota, and continuing south to the city limits of the City of Aurora and Brookings County, South Dakota." Can you tell us when the second reading, the public hearing, will be on that?
The second reading is scheduled for our next meeting on February 20th at 9:30 a.m.
Anything further regarding this matter? Thank you. Next, we have an action to approve Agreement 18-09, An Easement for Use of County Road Right-of-Way Made by Norfeld Colony. And do we have anyone here from the colony on that matter?
It was my understanding he was going to try to make it, but I don't see him here. Also, the House Bill 1184 is the one that is including, like they do for Rural Water and whatever in it. What they want to do is just add a new section to Chapter 31-26, and it'll probably be like -28. And the new section will read, "The provisions of this chapter apply to the lane and construction of force mains to dispose of animal waste." Currently, the way it is with, like you see their application, the, the board decides just on a case-by-case basis, I guess would be the best way to describe it, whether you allow it or not allow it. The new one, now that they're granting it as a utility, we still do the same thing. However, it probably allows some of the bigger dairies and whatever to kind of come with one application, would be my guess, to spread out and cover their system that they'll be using to dispose of, of the waste. Why I kind of liked the individual basis of it was like, in this case, it will only be for like two or three days annually, and it'll be for a short distance. So it is more or less temporary in nature. However, I don't think these people have the ability to cover liability-wise like you would in East River Electric, or Sioux Valley Electric, or somebody like that that would have some ramifications if something went astray. The other thing is too, we're getting in more and more, they've gone for years without having to pay for easements. Now, as soon as they get a obstruction in the path of least resistance, they want to use the road right-of-way as a means to get by. And, and in this case, I think maybe the neighbors are not in good standing with, with the people that are applying. And so they just want to, instead of having to deal with their neighbor, they just want to move it into the road ditch, go about a quarter of a mile, and then jump onto their own property where they'll, you know, apply it. I guess it leaves it up to you what your concerns are, or what they may be as far as manure waste. We, it's always been a good idea that we've made them provide their own culverts and go under the roads where necessary, and keep it away from like waterways and whatever. And then also, when they apply it, they've got some pretty strict standards they're adhering to also as far as, is the actual act of, of application. But from a highway standpoint, I just, I, I have a problem sometimes with everybody thinking that the road right-of-way is the, is the means of getting done what you want to do. You know, the road right-of-way was never designed as a path for utilities and miscellaneous activities, so to speak, is what I'd call it. You know, it should be for, for the priority of the road and, and public transportation and the safety of those people using that method of transportation. It, it shouldn't be just a location to, to save costs, so to speak. So it's up to you, but just, that's my two cents worth. And, and I don't think this House bill will get defeated. I think it'll go through rubber stamp, because there was no opposition in any of the, the discussions earlier. And it basically just clears the air that, I suppose, some people will have an easier time dealing with more difficult board, boards of commissioners. So, but anyway, that's.
I think we will interrupt our consideration on this easement. We have a regularly scheduled agenda item at 9:15. And then we'll come back and have Mr. Hill's staff report also, and see if anybody from Norfeld is here, and then see if there's a motion on that. Is that satisfactory with everyone? Then, this is the time and place for a regularly scheduled agenda item with the Brookings Public Library for its annual report for 2017. Would you step up and then say your name into the microphone and proceed?
Hello, I'm Asia Gustafson. I'm the library director. I took over for Alveda two years ago in March. So we just, I finished up my annual reports for the city and thought I would share it with you guys so you know what we are doing right across the street at the library. So you got my whole report. I'm just going to touch on a few things that I thought might be of interest to you. We circulated 201,000 items last year. And that's 201 circulations on 128,000 items in our library. We had, so of the library use, the 277,000 library uses, what people are coming in to use the library for, we had 20,854 people walk through our doors yesterday. We have a people count, or last year, we have a people counter, so that's pretty cool. Of our 14,775 registered patrons, 3,491 of them are county residents. So that's outside of Brookings, and that's not counting out of county cards. So our collection is always growing, which is always exciting. We got a gift from the friends. Our technology services librarian thought it would be fun to start a board game collection. It's kind of a thing that a lot of libraries are doing across the country. So she asked for $250 to start a board game collection. And then through other librarians, she found out you can contact board game publishers, and they will send you free games to have in your collection, because then people tend to buy them after they play them and like them. So we got approximately $1,045 in free games from board game publishers. We have a total of 86 games now in our collection, and they are circulating really well. It's been a very popular collection. We got a Larson Foundation grant this year to update our wireless connections. We had had a lot of complaints of not having enough coverage. We get a lot of people using it, so they weren't getting. We get a lot of people using it, so they weren't getting good speed with their wireless in the library. So we updated our wireless access points. We put in, oh, I'm not gonna remember. Anyway, we put in new wireless access points. It also counts how many wireless connections we get per day. And then we also were able to update some computer lab computers and our laptops that we circulate out. Our friend, we have a Friends of the Library group, which has been very supportive of us. Last year, they gifted us $13,000 for a variety of, for programming materials like the board games. And then also, we're doing some rearranging of libraries, so they purchased some furniture for our young adults section for us. Our summer reading program continues to be very popular. We had 1,500 kids sign up for the Build a Better World Summer Reading Program. Our young adults, our children's librarian, Catherine Everline, you will probably recognize her if you see her. She has bright multicolored hair. That is the incentive for kids to sign up for the summer reading program. The more kids that sign up, the more colors she dyes her hair. So when they sign up, they put down their favorite color, and then she dyes her hair various colors. We also, our teen programming is increasing. Ellie Brinsma, our young adult librarian, is doing great things there. She has an anime club, and last year, it had, the attendance has increased. She went from like 14 kids that usually came to over 20 kids, so that's been really exciting. And her teen book club continues to be very popular. Our adult programming is always doing really well and ready to some really great things. One of the very popular things is our craft night, which happens the fourth Tuesday of every month. Two really popular programs that we had last year was called hypertufa. It's like a porous concrete that you make, and then you form into pots. We had so much interest in that, she had to do a second program on that one. The other really popular one was beginning crochet. She had to do two programs on that one, too. So continuing to have lots of people signing up for those as well. And then she does book clubs, and we have other programs that come in. So lots of stuff like that. We offer notary services for free. We have about five people on staff who do notaries, and that continues to be, we get more and more people coming in to use that service. And then three of my staff, and I'm one of those, does proctoring, four students doing online classes in the area. And that, again, we keep getting more and more students, so it's a very popular service that we offer. And then, I don't know if you're aware, we have our large meeting room upstairs. It's called the Cooper Room, which we can also split into two. We have a small conference room and then two small study rooms. And the use of those continues to exponentially increase as well. The number in the report is non-library-related stuff, so we don't count our programs in there. That's just outside entities using our meeting rooms. So we're a very popular place. Do you have any questions about that large report I gave you? And I ran through that pretty quick.
Anybody have a comment?
Thank you for the report.
You're welcome.
I want to say that I might be one of your most hardened users of the electronic book process.
Excellent.
I'm checking books out every week, and I really do consider Brookings County, the library, to be one of our best amenities. Thank you for your report.
You're very welcome. Thank you.
Okay, we're back to agreement number 18-09. Mr. Hill, did you want to present your staff report?
Yes, ma'am. The, being involved with this type of scenario, since basically we started allowing them, initially, we would allow the pipes to go under just a regular drainage covert. And then that got to be, we had a break in the line back in around 2004, DNR fines and everything else. So then we, myself and Commissioner Claviter at the time, we went up here and we talked to Kent Woodmansey of DNR, and we figured out how to make a permit to allow pipes to cross through the ditch at a nun, at an area that's environmentally safe. If you notice, when Mr. Burke was talking about, we've got a permitting process to allow them to cross the roads with culverts, that's true. And where they cross the roads at is an environmentally safe area, which means if the pipe happens to break and there is a spill, it doesn't go straight into a drainage way and kill all the environmentally safe things. So, you know, DNR stated back then, road ditches are designed for the purpose of moving water, not necessarily manure, but with our permitting process and the way we allow them to do it, so as a drainage officer, I could not recommend we allow this practice. As a county development officer, being involved in the beginning of the permitting, you know, the road ditches do have the habitat that we need for our pheasants and every other little critter out there running around. And even if you look at the application, it's an eight-inch fire hose, basically is what they're referring to. And if we allow one, we are gonna have more requests in, that much I can pretty much assure you. And the way I see it now, if you put it into a roadway ditch, you're almost gonna have to make them go into a solid pipe-type scenario, because these hoses that they use to spread the manure is, in most cases, retired fire hose. They're eight inches in diameter or more or less. And what do you typically see in a county highway ditch, or even a township road ditch? Rocks. And what happens when a canvas-type hose rubs up against a rock long enough, it gets a hole in it, whether it's a pinhole, if it's, even if it's a pinhole, at high pressure, a pinhole will just start to spread manure. So in good conscience, I just can't recommend it. Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you. Is there anyone in the audience that is here to speak to agreement number 18-09, an easement for the use of county road right-of-way made by Norfeld Colony? Anyone appearing on that matter? Any discussion by the commission?
Just a quick question. Your last comment on your report states that it has been done in the past, but only to cross a road, not necessarily lay a pipe in a ditch, so the pipe has gone through a culvert, which obviously carries water to go to the other side. Is that how it's been done in the past?
The culvert, the culvert is specially sited so it doesn't go into the drainage way. It's not a true drainage culvert. It is a drainage culvert. I mean, all culverts are drainage culverts. But it's situated such as on a high point of the land, so it doesn't contribute to the
Yes, it means crossing, not parallel.
Right, right. This is a request for parallel?
Yes.
We've not approved any parallels in the past?
No.
No. How many have we approved going under a road through a culvert historically?
We've had...
A lot?
A lot. A lot. Well, 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 19.
Oh, 19? Yeah. And any issues with any of those 19 that were across the road?
No.
Okay.
Other than the one Bob was talking about where they had an accident or whatever.
And that was before, that was before...
As before me.
Specifically cited them in non-environmental areas.
Okay. Well, it's probably not pertinent at this point, but the legislature may do this session because this request came in before that. We have to act on it based on the information and the rules we have now. Your request to deny this, or to us anyways, to basically not allow a parallel type of a situation, you're not basically sedating that we don't want any manure crossing roads anymore. It's just the parallel in the ditch situation that you're concerned about, and it's never been allowed in the past. Am I correct in assuming that's the case?
Correct.
Thank you.
The process in the past was to cross the road at the area. There was a berm installed, so it would prevent the manure from running down the hill into the water area. It was under my understanding previous, if we permitted, letting them run a parallel in the right-of-way, if there would happen to be a break, and that would end up in a water tributary, that the county would be somewhat liable because of our permitting them to place it there. In this instance, you know, it could run two, three miles within the right-of-way, and I'm sure there's water areas within those areas.
Does anyone want to make a motion to approve the agreement? Then, in this situation, if we're not going to have a motion to approve, do we need to take any action?
Would it be best to make a motion to approve, and then, if your intent is to not approve it, then vote no?
Okay. I would entertain a motion to approve the agreement.
I'm not gonna make a motion and vote no against my own motion. So...
Another option for us would be a motion to table. Yep. That's another option that basically kills it.
I mean, we can't make a motion to deny?
No, that's a negative motion. Has to be a positive motion. You can make a motion to table indefinitely, and then it lays on the table.
How about a motion for discussion purposes?
You have discussion after you have the motion.
You're making a motion to approve the agreement for discussion purposes? Is that what you just said?
No, I said, what if that's...
I think it would be best to just table the motion.
Ask for a second, not get a second, and then say the motion denies for the lack of a second, and we're done.
But it's also a possibility. It also dies if there's no motion to approve.
Well, it has died because there's no motion to approve. Okay.
That would be fine.
Thank you. And then we're going to move on to a scheduled agenda item. We have a 9:30 meeting with SDML, our Workers' Compensation Fund presentation. Mr. Wilson, you could come forward, and would you just say your name for the telephone, or the TV viewers, and go ahead and proceed?
Yes, thank you. Thank you for having me today. My name's Brad Wilson. I'm the administrator for the SDML Workers' Compensation Fund. We provide the work comp coverage for Brookings County. And just through some conversations and questions, we just thought it would be a good idea for me just to come in and talk to you about your work comp program and answer any questions. I do have a few questions that have come up that I will incorporate in this, but I'll just start in with the slides, if that's all right.
Right ahead.
So, again, the SDML Work Comp Fund, just a little bit of background. All we do is provide workers' compensation coverage to public agencies in South Dakota, all the counties, most of the cities, conservation districts, fire and ambulance services. And within, and that's all that we do. We're endorsed by the County Association and by the South Dakota Municipal League. So going into work comp, Stephanie, if you could go back one slide to work comp, a lot of times for workers' compensation, everyone says, well, what is it? You know, is it unemployment insurance? Is it disability insurance, life insurance? What exactly is it? And sometimes it's almost easier to define what it is not. And it is not those things, although there are components of work comp coverage. But basically, what workers' compensation does is it provides, it's a protection that you purchase for the injuries to your employees while they're in the line of duty. While they're doing their job, a compensable claim, work comp coverage steps in and pays for certain benefits, which Stephanie would be the next slide, provides certain benefits to your employees for work-related injuries. Work comp, workers' compensation isn't like your liability and property where you say, I want a million-dollar limit or a $2 million limit. Well, if I reduce my limit or increase my deductible, can we save some money on that? Not in South Dakota. South Dakota, and in most states, workers' compensation is statutory benefits. And in South Dakota, that means there's no, there's no limit. And as a work comp carrier in South Dakota, everybody has to provide the same limits. They can tweak a little bit in the deductible. You can buy deductible and get a little haircut in your cost, but with us, we don't do that. There's no deductible. We pay medical bills, dollar one right from the beginning. The second benefit that you receive is several names for it. It's called, the proper name is indemnity, but it's your lost wages, two-thirds of the average weekly wage of the employee, also known as lost wages or disability. Maximum right now is $781 per week, and it's a minimum of $391. Also rehabilitation or retraining benefits. Say you have somebody who is in a position where they require, you know, manual labor, they're not able to go back to that job, but they're able to be retrained for an administrative-type job, work comp pays for that. And then also death benefits. There's a death benefit of $10,000 if an employee is, dies in the line of duty. So, next slide, please. So who does it cover? Well, it covers your employees. Next slide. And so the next question is, well, who are employees? I mean, in public entities, it gets a little bit, it's not quite as clear as it is with a, you know, a private business, but your employees is anyone who's on the payroll. If they're being paid, they're covered from minute one, from the day they step on the job, full-time, part-time, temporary, seasonal, they're covered. If they're on the payroll, they're automatically covered. There's nothing you need to do. Also includes elected and appointed officials. They are covered as well. If they're not, if they're not being paid, then that's where we roll into the volunteers, which is really what kind of spurred this all, this whole conversation on. So, next slide, please. So our volunteers, volunteers are anyone who is not paid but provides some kind of service to the county. You know, anywhere, emergency management comes to mind specifically, volunteer boards that are appointed, maybe a weed board. You have board members that are appointed, but they're not paid. They're volunteers. Are they automatically covered for workers, for work comp coverage? And the answer is no, they're not. The reason is, is because under South Dakota work comp law, they are not an employee. An employee is anyone who's earning a wage and providing a service. So volunteers not being paid, they're not automatically covered. So it brings us to the next question. Are you required to cover them? They're not an employee. You're not hiring them. They're volunteering their time and their service. So as a county, as a public entity, are you required to provide that work comp coverage? The answer to that is no as well. You're under no obligation to cover a volunteer, whether you appoint them, or whether they just volunteer their time, you know, maybe, I don't know if it's a county library, but you might have some volunteer librarians, is an example, or a museum. But, you know, if you have emergency management, maybe a search and rescue dive team, I know the fire department's under the city, but fire and ambulance, a lot of times are volunteers. Those are, those are instances where you see work comp coverage being extended. Emergency services is very common. So, but are you under an obligation? Can you be sued? No, can't be sued for not making a volunteer an employee, even though they're not making a wage. It's driven by state statute, and the state has made it very clear about how, if you do want to provide work comp coverage to a volunteer, how do you do that? That'd be the next slide. So, very complicated, but it is, kind of wordy, but I just tried to point out, what are the points that you just need to know? Basically, what the volunteer statute, this is a state statute, this is in our rule, this applies to every, and anyone who provides work comp coverage to a public entity. But basically, what they, what the statute says is, you need to know who they are, and you need to specifically say, we want your service, and we're gonna cover you for work comp. So somebody can't show up and say, hey, I showed up and, you know, filled sandbags to help with the flooding. I don't know exactly when I was there or what day it was, but I was there and I wrenched my back. Well, they're not covered. This statute is how you cover a volunteer. So, number one, who are they? You want them, and you're covering them for work comp. So that's the procedure that the state legislature has put into place to cover volunteers, and that's why I can tell you, you can be rest assured that they can't force you to make someone an employee, say if they get injured, say, well, you should be paying for, I should be getting work comp benefits. Yes, Ryan?
Okay, question then. So say we have flooding, and you have neighbors show up, and it says, entered into official records, minutes of the entity. How do you make an official record? Do you make an official record there at the site? For example, our meeting maybe a week later, that we had volunteers working at an emergency situation, neighbors or whatever, how do we, you know, how do we cover ourselves if we want that person covered?
If you do want them covered, what we recommend in emergency situations, like in flooding situations, is one of the most common, is that you have a sign-up sheet. You have somebody who's in charge of signing, you know, having people sign in and sign out. Who are they, and when were they there? And, you know, obviously, maybe between meetings, you may not have the opportunity to enter them in. Obviously, if they're gonna get hurt, it's gonna be before your next meeting. But that's what we've always advised our members, is that that's the way to handle that, and we'll honor that. I had a conversation with the, with now, I guess, retired director of the Department of Labor, because one of the questions that Stephanie had presented to me is, well, how often do you have to enter those volunteers? Is, you know, just do it once a year, and then you're covered for the year? Because we have a couple other counties that have lots, lots of emergency service volunteers, and they, so they present them once a month. And actually, many, Haha County, and that's the example, Stephanie, on the next slide. This is what an entry would look like in your minutes. It has to be very simple, doesn't have to be real wordy. It just has to say, here's our volunteers, and we're covering them for work comp. And the roster is on file, you know, in the HR office. You don't have to list them all by name, but you do have... You don't have to list them all by name, but you do have to have that roster if you're not going to list them by name. Very simple, very easy, but just whoever, you know, you can say, you know, this roster we're covering, you don't have to say who you're not, you just enter who you are covering. Just because you cover one group of volunteers doesn't mean you have to cover another group. And really, you know, the flood situation that you talked about a few years ago, when we had lots of flooding kind of going on here in North, we had lots of questions on that. Lots of questions, but not, not very, I don't, I can't think of any of our counties who actually took the action and covered people just showing up to fill sandbags. It's, the question is, do you want that risk? Because that, that affects your claims history, which we'll talk about here in a minute. So, basically, one of the counties, Pennington County had asked, because they have, I mean, they have weekly meetings and they have volunteers lists changing all the time, they said, well, I mean, why, do we have to do it at every meeting? So, I had a discussion with the Department of Labor, said, well, that statute can clarify it a bit, I mean, how often is, you know, is the right amount of time? And their answer was that the statute is very clear, meaning that if they're not on the roster and they're not in your minutes, they're not covered. But what we did is, as, because we're flexible that way and all we do is deal with, with public agencies, so we're able to, you know, we just took the notion that if you do that thing, you know who your volunteers are, you keep the roster, if you do it once a month, we're going to accept that. We're not looking for a reason not to cover somebody, but if a meeting goes by and someone is on a roster and they get hurt and then they come back and say, hey, wait a minute, we meant to, well, you had several opportunities to get them into the minutes and cover them if that was your intent. So, okay.
Thank you.
Next slide, employee-volunteer, just a couple of examples, a lot of times with counties, what comes up is your election, your election workers. It's kind of a, I don't say a donor hole, but they're kind of a, you know, are they or aren't they, you know, you don't put them on the payroll, but you do pay them, they are covered for work comp. But, you know, the example of, yeah, a county volunteer board, you know, the commissioners, you appoint them, but they're not paid, that's your decision on whether you want to provide the work comp coverage for them. So, and that's the process you have to follow if you do want to cover them. I think we covered the how often. So, basically, it just comes down to, are they paid and on the payroll or are they not? So, next slide. So then, what can you do to cover or to reduce your work comp, the cost of your workers' compensation coverage? So, it's, you know, there's really, as an adjuster in my prior life, and it's, if you can avoid a claim, it's the best. If you can never avoid a claim, it's always the best way to do it. So, you do that with having a safety program to avoid and reduce those claims, that loss control credit that you receive, that's because you, you're complying with the recommended, or your employees are complying with, department heads with the recommendations that are loss control companies, safety benefits, they come out and they do inspections, they say these things are some, are things that need to be fixed. By complying with that, you get that loss control credit, and that all, that helps reduce your costs. You get a 9% credit for that, for every three years, they come out and do that, and so you get a 9% credit per year. And then the other is returning injured workers back to work as best as possible, and it's, it is, I try to, I talk about this almost as much as I do volunteers, because it's probably the number two question that I get, volunteers is number one. Returning injured worker back to work, say if they're not full capacity and they can't go back and do their, their normal job that you pay them to do. They don't have to go back to work in their same department, their same job. If you have, if they can be accommodated in another department doing other work, that's, that's returning work, an injured worker back to work. That reduces the cost of your claim, gets that, gets that employee engaged and back in, in the swing of things. The data is, is so clear, it's crystal clear that the longer an employee is off work and not back being engaged, the harder time that you'll have getting them back to work. After three months, if employee is not back at work, you got about a 20% chance of them coming back. After six months, you got about half a chance. And after a year, it's really very unlikely. So, it's really important to get them back to work and in the swing of things again. So, if you do get requests from, you know, our rehab nurses or whoever saying, can you accommodate, is there something they can do? You know, if they end up getting injured doing, doing that, we're willing to take that chance, because more likely than not, they're going to get back and get better sooner. So, that's one of the ways. So, the next thing is your experience, or, excuse me, that, there's our website, there's all the training options that your employees can take advantage of. New is the streaming videos. Now you don't have to order videos from us, you can just go right online, your department heads can go right in and have online streaming videos. So, very, very cool. That's, that is brand new. Next slide is your experience modifier. This is the one thing that really, how do you, the things that you can do to affect your costs, this is what it affects, is your experience modifier. Right now, Brookings, your modifier is a .87, which basically means that you're receiving a 13% credit for the, for your good claims history. Basically, it's a complicated formula, but in the simplest form, how many claims do you have and how much do they cost? So, next slide. So, controlling your costs, like I said, you're getting a, you know, if you're average, you're a one, you're not, you're not paying more, you're not paying less for your claims history. But based on your past three years, Brookings County has done very well, and I'll show you the numbers here. But basically, if your, your claims frequency is low and your cost of your claims is low, that'll drive that modifier down, which translates into a credit for what you're paying. So, next slide, just taking a look at, by department for the, for Brookings County, where are, where are the costs of the claims the most? Number one is law enforcement, and this is five-year data. So, over the past five years, law enforcement is where most of the costs are coming out of, and the next is the highways. And just to tell you, within our group, that's exactly the way it is. Law enforcement, highway is the bulk of our cost, because you're a bigger county with big law enforcement, costs are a little bit more, but that's expected. It's, if you have, if you have a big law enforcement department, your, the costs coming out of there are going to be more as far as the claims. So, next slide is just a bar chart, if you'd like to look at it in a different way, just shows you the same way. But even though that bar looks really way up there, again, within our group as a whole, that's very normal. So.
Is that your group or is that our county?
I'm sorry, this is, what you're looking at is the county.
Okay.
And then for us as a group, it's law enforcement and highway, streets and highway departments is, is, you know, and, you know, it's, it's the nature of the job. So, next is, so how many claims? Where does your claims frequency come out of? Again, it's coming out of law enforcement and streets and highways, and actually, a little bit out of the building and custodial, again, we see that. If you were a city and had parks, parks departments are also kind of right in the same area. So, again, the next slide is just the same data for Brookings County, just looking at it another way. And again, far as claims frequency, with our 470 members, that's what we see, are those two departments. So, nothing out of the ordinary there. So, the next slide is the county as a whole, not by department, but just as a whole, how do you compare against other counties and our group of all cities and counties together? So, a loss ratio is, for every dollar you're paying, how much are we paying out for claims? You can see your five and three-year averages is actually really, really good. And all, your award that you received last year is a reflection of that. So, the last three to five years, that's why, right there is why your modifier is going down. The counties on average are, the last three to five years, you know, you're a third of their, a third of their loss ratio and of our group. So, had a very good run the last five years. And also, the next, looking at how much do we pay per claim? We figure, you know, $3,000 to $4,000 per claim on average for our group. Counties are a little bit higher, but Brookings County at this point, last three and five years, very, very good. Five-year, the number of claims, this is that frequency that we talk about, your frequency is average, maybe a touch above average than the counties and our group as a whole. But a lot of times with that, if the claims dollars don't reflect it, I mean, which yours are very good, what that shows, when you, we see this where in entities that have an HR department, is that the, you have a very good reporting system. I mean, you have, people are, employees, they know if something happens, you report it. And so, if that number's a little bit high, I'd be concerned, a little bit concerned if you had the frequency and the dollar, the severity, but you don't, so that just tells me that, that your HR department has, has people trained and the department heads have their employees trained, that something happens, report it. So, and then the very last one, that's a loss rate, and this is an underwriting number that I use, and that our actuary uses. Basically, this, this evens out the playing field, whether you're Western South Dakota, Eastern, small town like Burke, South Dakota, where I'm from, this takes all the variability of your size and the mixture of your departments. So, basically, it's just how much per $100 a payroll are we paying in claims? And you can see the counties are a little over a dollar. And again, Brookings County, you're about a third of what the group and the counties are. So, that's why you're receiving that 13% credit. And actually, looking at it, next year, it's probably going to go down even more as one year falls off, as long as, well, last year's complete. So, it should go down even a little bit more next year. So, I don't want to speculate on that, because the bean counters at the actuary department, they, they take care of all of that. So, any questions at this point? I do have to say, you have a very good work comp program going on right now. Eight, nine, 10 years ago, I don't remember exactly when it was, before this building was built, I know that, but I was here meeting with, with one of the commissioners and your commission assistant, trying, talking about what, what you needed to do to bring those numbers down. And obviously, it's, it's happened, so congratulations, very good. So, again, any questions before I move on? Two awards that Brookings County has received, last year at the county convention, Brookings County received a platinum-level safety award. This is something that, Stephanie, do you and Laura fill out that, the application for that, or maybe there's a safety coordinator? There's an application, basically, it's showing, this is, this is all the safety things that we're doing. And there's three levels of that, there's a bronze, silver, and gold. Gold is the best. So, you're, and a platinum level means that that loss ratio is less than 60%. You can see yours is around 20. So, what, so basically, what the platinum level means, that you're doing all the right things and your, your loss ratio is reflecting it. And so, you received a platinum-level award at the county convention for that. And then the other reason that I'm here is that we're celebrating our 30-year anniversary as a, as a group, as a fund. In 1987, this is when the SDML Work Comp Fund was, was founded. That year, there were 52 members. Now, rolling into 2018, running into our 31st year, we have 271 members. So, in Brookings County, I'm here to present a plaque for a 30-year membership. I joined in 1988, and so just here to recognize and thank you on behalf of the Board of Trustees and the other 470 members of the SDML Work Comp Fund. And I do have a, if you mind if I present to Madam Chair, and if you'd like a photo, I have a press release as well. And unless there's any questions, I think I covered the questions that we had, and unless there was anything further, that is all that I have.
Thank you for coming.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you for having me.
I'm wondering, Stacy, if, if you would be willing to share with Laura, because I think she does a lot of work on our workers' comp program, what a fine job that Mr. Wilson's saying she's doing.
Yeah, yep, I will share that. And also, as part of this, at the end, if you, if you notice that I have a be it noted with all of our lists of our volunteers, I thought this would be the appropriate time to note those in the minutes, since we've just got done with Brad's presentation.
Well, thank you very much, we appreciate your coming.
Thank you for having me. And one last thing, I just have to say that, you know, been working with Stephanie and Laura, they do a wonderful job. I mean, they're, they're never on the naughty list, it's always, everything is always in on time or before, and so, very good to work with. Oh, gosh, I'm, did I say Stephanie? I'm sorry. Was I saying that the whole time?
Yeah.
Her last, her last name confuses, gets me confused with Stephanie before. I apologize, sorry.
Nope.
Thank you.
Thanks, Brad.
As a relatively due commissioner, I do want to commend the staff for their hard work in getting this award and over the 30 years. I mean, it, it means a lot. We don't do a whole lot up here to affect those numbers, it all comes from the staff, and we appreciate that.
Okay. Next item on the agenda is an action to approve Agreement 18-10, an agreement to release escrow fund.
Move approval.
Second.
Any discussion?
It sounds like we were able to receive all of the personal property that was missing, and so, checked with the sheriff, and sheriff has received everything and is good with it, it's all checked in. And so, there's really no reason why we shouldn't release the funds to First Bank and Trust.
There was yesterday a tax lien filed against the Brookings Outdoor Learning Center for $17,745, and I'm going to pass that along for everybody to see. And I just, when you, when Stacy, after we approve this, if we do, when you send the agreement over to the bank, would you send a copy of that? I don't think this impacts on that, but I'm not 100% sure, and I just think the bank should be aware of that. So, any problem with that? Any more discussion?
No, the escrow was just for the guns that were.
Exactly.
Property.
Call the roll, please.
Crookman.
Aye.
Bartley.
Aye.
Jensen.
Aye.
Pierce.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Next, we have an action to approve Agreement 18-11, an independent contractor agreement between Brookings County and Dennis Hetrick, a firearms instructor.
Move approval.
Second.
Discussion?
There is an updated version of this agreement on, that I handed out this morning on your desks. That's quite different from the one that was presented in the packet. And that is the one that we would like approved.
Okay, so, would we have a motion to amend the motion to approve the revised independent contractor agreement, as opposed to the one that's in the original packet?
I know they changed it.
The, the changes, first of all, I don't know, Ms. Nessvold, if you'd like to just talk about the changes that you made, would that be okay?
Yeah, we have a motion, we can discuss it, yeah.
We just changed the terminology, there was also some issues on compensation, on the volunteer hours, we just wanted to make sure that it was distinct enough to realize that they're going to be getting paid, anything else would be applied to volunteer hours. We just wanted to make it more transparent than the one that was in the packet before, and easily understandable as far as, basically, it was the compensation that I was more concerned about, that and the, the tax withholding and how payment was going to be submitted. So, those were my main concerns.
One of the changes in there reflects the fact that Mr. Hetrick, and clarifies a little bit, when he's teaching RSO classes, he wants those classes to be applied toward his volunteer hours and not him as an independent contractor. And we needed to have that clarified, so he'd have workers' comp coverage if he gets injured during the time that he's working as a volunteer. And so, in number.
That was in 2.5.
2.5, that sets that out, that while he is serving as a volunteer, he has all the same benefits and privileges granted to other BCOAC volunteers. The, the reason that's important is that if he's teaching a class and we're paying him an hourly rate to do that, and he gets injured while he's on the firearm range, he will not be covered by our workers' comp as an independent contractor. But if he's teaching an RSO class and he gets injured on the range, he'll be covered by, because he's a volunteer, he gets covered by our workers' comp.
And I think it's just really apropos after the presentation we got, to make sure that we're clarifying whether, when he's a volunteer and when he's not, so.
And I, I do have a little bit of a concern on exactly how we're tracking that.
Yeah.
So, that, that will have to be something that, that the OAC is going to have to figure out how he keeps track of his hours for that purpose.
We have, we'll have more people coming up with this, because we'll have more classes and different classes and different stuff. Is this something that we can use as a similar type of boilerplate agreement?
Exactly.
That when Robert says, okay, we're going to enter into a contract, we can say, hey, here you go, here's our independent contractor form, let's fill, change in what we need to change, and this is.
We could change the firearms to archery, vice versa, things like that.
Okay.
Ready for a motion?
Yes.
Okay, I'll make a motion to amend the main motion to reflect the contract presented to us today.
Second.
All in favor of the amendment?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. And then, do we have any more discussion on the main?
I had a question, Mr. Hetrick, is he aware of the change? I had a question, Mr. Hetrick, is he aware of the changes?
Not yet.
Not yet, okay, because I know he drafted the original.
Well, and it was based off of some stuff we, you know, gave him and stuff, and so they kind of filled that in, and then, yeah, then another's been changed. So, he's going to have to agree to this also. But, I mean, most of the stuff is, is more in-depth clarification.
Right.
Defining him, so, it's not changing, it's not changing the intent of what he's trying to get at.
Benefit.
Yeah, so, he's not an attorney, none of us, you know, and so, changes are, are recommendation, I'm sure it's going to be.
And they're to his benefit for his safety, so I don't foresee a problem, but he has to, like, as mentioned, he has to agree to it, so.
If he doesn't sign it, then we got to come back.
Yep.
Call the roll. Bartley.
Aye.
Jensen.
Aye.
Krogman.
Aye.
Pierce.
Aye.
Main motion as amended, carried.
Item E, action to approve agreement 18-12, an implication for occupancy of right-of-way of county highways made by Swift Hell Communications.
So, move.
Second.
Any discussion? Call the roll.
Jensen.
Aye.
Krogman.
Aye.
Bartley.
Aye.
Pierce.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Item F, action to approve a request to fill vacancy for a truck driver in the weed and pest department.
Move approval.
Second.
Misty, did you want to say anything about this?
This is just a position we fill every year. And it's, it's nice to have four truck, three truck drivers, excuse me.
This is part-time, correct?
Very, yep, part-time.
Any other discussion? Call the roll.
Krogman.
Aye.
Bartley.
Aye.
Jensen.
Aye.
Pierce.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Item G, action to approve a request to fill vacancy for a weed enforcement officer in the weed and pest department.
So, move.
Second.
Misty, anything you'd like to say on this one?
With this position, this makes my job a little bit easier to have this position filled. Because when I'm out in the truck, I have to stop the truck, answer my phone, and shut the truck off, of course, because you cannot hear. And then to go look at complaints that are called in or, and to follow up on paperwork is just a lot easier if we can have somebody help me out with that.
Any further discussion?
And this is part-time also.
Part-time during, during the summer type of, what, when does that start, or when do you, when the, with the part-time?
First of April, maybe, between the first and the 15th of April.
And then, so is it a certain time period, or is this a year-long position?
Six months.
Six months.
And when he's not doing, handling the complaints, or he's helping you with the weed and the trucks and stuff?
Then he'll either be in a truck if he's got a Class B C D L, or I can also put him in a pickup and have him go spot spray. So, he, he or she will always have something to do.
One other question, I assume this is covered in your current budget, budget request is.
Yes, it is in my budget.
Okay.
Any other discussion?
No.
Call the roll.
Krogman.
Aye.
Bartley.
Aye.
Jensen.
Aye.
Pierce.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Item H, action to approve and publish the rates or salaries for fiscal year 2018.
Move approval.
Second.
Stacy?
I did hand out a new list this morning to reflect our newly appointed state's attorney and deputy state's attorney.
Thank you. Any other discussion? Call the roll.
Bartley.
Aye.
Jensen.
Aye.
Krogman.
Aye.
Pierce.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Item I, discussion and possible action on changes to the Brookings County Employee Policies and Procedures Manual. Stacy, why don't you go ahead with this?
The first, the first thing that I wanted to note, and it was, it actually was brought up at a recent safety committee meeting, was that our, I want to get there, it's our, our, our policy on weapons, and it's 3103, I can get there. Okay, so here. Talks about how we define weapons and that it's, every, all of this is expressly forbidden to be brought onto Brookings County property. I think we need to add some language in there that speaks to the outdoor, Brookings County Outdoor Adventure Center. It is county property, and there are obviously things that are considered weapons being brought to that facility because it's a gun range and an archery range. So, I think we need to update some language there. If we just, you know, that this, I guess I don't know what that language should, should look like exactly, but I think we need some language that exempts the B C O A C from at least a part of this policy.
Yep, it would just be the B C O A C employees, correct?
All the people that come in and shoot.
Yeah. It'd be everybody that uses the facility.
Well, it's employee handbook is what I'm.
Well, that's true.
And maybe it's okay, maybe you don't want employees that, bringing, bringing weapons to the B C O A C, however, you know, this is.
We do have volunteers out there that do bring, that's.
And I have an employee as a director, so I think, you know, we could have Tracy, or.
My name is Stacy. No, I'm Tracy.
It's going to be one of those days. We could have Terry draft some, some language that basically excludes those employees of the Brookings Outdoor Adventure Center.
I do, I do think there needs to be clarification, because there could be employees that go there recreationally. So, yep, we'll look at that.
Employees and users, recreational users or members.
Yeah, I don't know, we'll have, I'll look at that, I don't know if we really want to say anything specifically to members in our employee manual. Might just want to limit it to our actual staff, because otherwise we're taking.
Recommended.
Just to cover the employees that would be in this menu, yeah.
So, this change would come back to us a little bit later, so we don't have, we don't have to word it right now. Okay, thank you.
But we probably should, in there, law enforcement are not excluded from that requirement. And we probably need to clarify unless you're required to carry a weapon as part of your job.
Yeah, because if he's, if sheriff puts together a chute there for his employees, is that, that's going to be on county time, a county thing, and they need to carry their weapons.
And that would be included in the verbiage.
Yeah, okay.
I do have a question, the, out at the O A C, that when you bring a weapon in, it has to be cased in something else, I can't remember, there's a phrase that they're using. Should that be part of our policy, that if you're an employee that's non-law enforcement and you're bringing a weapon out there, that it has to meet that particular requirement that the O A C rules have?
I think we could just put something that must follow, you know, Brookings County Outdoor Adventure Center policies and procedures.
To Ryan's point, we don't see an exclusion in here for law enforcement, do we need to also put that in somehow or another?
Correct, yeah. Then the next one was the parking, and I think Commissioner Pierce had asked that I bring this up, there is section 3.13, parking, with the potential of a, a new parking lot going in next door, if not this year, within probably the next year and a half, probably. If this is something we want to look at now.
And I wasn't trying to jump the guns, but our strategic plan says we look at our employee handbook once a year, and we won't do that again. And I'm, I was just wondering if this provision maybe should go to joint powers. I don't know if the city has a similar provision in its employee handbook or not, but maybe, maybe this is something to discuss. It doesn't have to be done anytime soon, but as we're moving forward to completing the parking lot, maybe we want to modify this. Who's on joint powers?
But it already says they can park in the lots, to the south of the city government building, and that would be to the south that we purchased. I'm sure they were referring to the lot that's there now.
Okay, right.
This would just be an extra lot, so it just, I don't think you have to define it any further than the lot south.
So, you think it meets our needs?
Big lot to the south.
So, we don't need any revision for that. And then, the other, the next one, 9.2.3, subpart 5, is our administrative leave policy. And I asked that this be put on here, because it concerned me when the governor gave an extra day, Tuesday, for, for Christmas. And then we felt like we were, it was mandatory that we give that same day. And I would like to consider amending this part of the statute, or statute, the handbook, to make it clear that the, the county commission, if the governor is giving days in addition to what we would normally have on our list, that we have the authority to say, no, we don't want to do that. And what happens with the state employees, and I believe happened this year, they had Tuesday off as well as Monday. Monday was Christmas Day, and then they had the 26th off also, is because that was, sometimes a governor might feel like employees that aren't getting any raises this year maybe deserve a little more time off, and that happens in state government on occasion. We give our employees raises, and we should keep control over whether or not we're shutting down county government, so that, and I did have somebody that commented to me that they couldn't come in and do any license plate stuff that day. You know, that we shut down all of our offices, because that was the governor's decision instead of our decision. I'm not saying whether we should decide our employees get that day or not, I just want it to be clear, it's not automatic, that if it's something that's outside of our list, the commission should make the decision. Any, anybody?
And I think we need to clarify that, because that, what, the Christmas was on our list. If you're, do you, here's my question, do you want all administrative leave days to come back to the board for approval?
No.
Okay, because we, it, it says in the policy that Christmas Eve or a specified date if Christmas Eve falls on a Saturday or Sunday. That's why we just did it, because it's.
That's the part that should come back to the commission, if we're going to pick another business day.
So, you just wanted to say just Christmas Eve?
Right.
If it's Christmas Eve Day, it's fine, but if it's something other than the 24th?
What, just a second, I got to get to that exact wording that's in there. Our days, our days that we give off, give our employees holidays are the 10 days that are listed up above, okay?
Yeah.
And those days, of course.
Yeah.
Are automatic, and we don't need to do anything with those. But, when we look at subpart 5, and we say that the county, in addition to those 10 days, will grant administrative leave hours for Good Friday, day after Thanksgiving, and Christmas Eve, if Christmas Eve falls on a Saturday or Sunday. And that's why the 26th of December, and it, which was a Tuesday, ended up being a leave day. And I'm not saying yes or no that we should give that December 26th, I just think that if we're picking a business day that is not one of our holidays, it should come back to us to make a decision on.
And Christmas Eve and Good Friday are not our holidays.
No, they are not.
And either is the day after Thanksgiving.
Mm-hmm.
That's, that's Good Friday, right?
No, the day after Thanksgiving is a, it's always a Friday.
Yeah.
But that's.
That's.
So.
That's where the holiday was established.
And.
Well, Friday after Thanksgiving is the one that says administrative leave, that's, those aren't holidays that normally in our 10 days. Those were the ones.
These are the ones that are not normally in our 10 days.
Right.
Good Friday, Thanksgiving, the day after Thanksgiving, and Christmas Eve. Or, and, and the reason the 26th happened this past year was because we have this language, or specified date if Christmas Eve falls on a Saturday or Sunday. Christmas Eve was Sunday, the governor specified the 26th is the day off. That's why it's, that's why it was granted.
And this says that we will give it if the.
If the state grants it, yes.
And so, you're saying, get rid of the will, may?
May.
At the discretion of the.
County Commission.
County Commission.
All of those days.
Those two.
All three, Good Friday, the day after Thanksgiving, and Christmas Eve.
And I don't necessarily have a problem with, I mean, we, we know, we plan for, and citizens know about the day after Thanksgiving, but, but I, if it's easier and cleaner just to say each one of those come back for, fine, but just the, the Christmas Eve thing this year, when that was a regular business day, and our citizens were working and they thought we should be working, should come back to us to consider.
For instance, like, this year, Christmas Eve is a Monday, and Christmas Day is a Tuesday. There is a chance that the governor will declare the 24th as an administrative leave day for state employees.
Yes.
Do you want that to come back to the, the board as, to give the okay to give that as, as administrative leave? Do you want the day after Thanksgiving to come back to the board to say, yes, we will grant that as administrative leave?
Yes.
Just to make it, so no matter, whenever there's administrative leave given by the state and it's on this list, we'll come back to the board for final approval?
That wouldn't be very burdensome, we could do that.
Yeah.
Funny to notice.
Yep.
Okay, yep, I can, absolutely can draft language, and I'll bring that change back. The next, one of the next.
We're driving the bus, or the city's driving the bus, but when people come into this particular building and one side is open for business and the other side is not, that creates a, a problem with the public's perception of how we run our county and our city government. So, I think, I don't know what the city's policy is on, on this particular leave, but it is something I think we need to consider when we close a building on our side when they're open and people are coming in, and what's going on next door, they're all locked up, I needed to do something. Now, if it's, the whole building's locked up, it's pretty obvious, but if it's only half open and.
And we used to do that a lot, that used to happen to the county when we were over at the courthouse and shared the building with state offices.
Yeah.
That happened a lot, and I think that's kind of where this came from, is that then we decided, okay, we'll follow what the state does.
And I'm not saying that we don't continue to do that, I just, we need to be cognizant of the fact of the public services that we provide. We'll have a conflict when one place is open and the other's not, when we occupy the same facility. Just, that's for our consideration, when we say may, it allows us that chance to, to visit with the city and what their policy would be at that particular date.
Does the governor set these holidays far enough in advance that we'd have a commission meeting between to act?
Not, not necessarily, sometimes yes, but sometimes it's kind of a last-minute decision.
That's what I mean.
Yeah, it, it just, it really does just depend.
We'll have a new governor coming up here in a little bit, it'll be interesting to see if that governor wants to do administrative leave or not.
Yeah.
Okay, so, we don't need to take any action, right?
No, what, what we will do is we'll bring those changes, you know, once, I'll keep in touch with Terry when she has the changes ready on that, the weapons portion, and then I'll do the verbiage on the administrative leave and then bring those back to you as amendments to the manual.
Then we're ready for the commission department director report?
Spring workshop is coming up in about a month, March 14th, get to my report, I suppose. March 14th and 15th out in Pier. It does start fairly early on that morning of the 14th, I believe, it starts at 8:30, so I do have, I have rooms reserved at, and it's at the Ramcota for Tuesday night and Wednesday night. It wraps up about 3 o'clock or so on Thursday, the 15th. So, I'm looking to get, get us registered, I have to send that and send our registration form and payment in here before the first of the month. So, if you know that you plan to go to that, I will work on getting us registered. Larry, yes? Anybody else planning to attend? Mike?
Tentatively, yes.
Tentatively, yes.
How much is our registration fee?
I believe it's, did I not have, did I have that in there?
You probably did.
Yeah, $100, it's $100 for the two days.
Okay.
Do you get billed after you show up, or do you pay ahead of time?
Pay ahead.
And then if you don't come, it's not refunded, is that correct?
I think you can refund, yeah, no refund after March 9th.
Okay.
The agenda was included. It's just a, this is just a really general overview. This is usually, this is not, you know, where Fall Convention is where you kind of go from meeting to meeting to meeting. This is one meeting for commissioners. It's usually held in that big kind of amphitheater at the Ram Cota, and the speakers come to you for this one, so. And it's just a good general overview of a lot of different things, and especially right after the legislative session, they'll have updates on what happened during session too, so.
I will not be going up the night before the 13th, so if I go, I'm going to drive up on the 14th. But I still got to check. Let's see.
Okay.
What I'll do is I'll, I would miss that first session and be there by 10.
Okay. Yeah, just let me know, like I said, if you want me to go ahead and register you, I can, you know, there's the March 9th where I could, you know, get in contact with them and get the refund too, so.
I don't know yet. I guess possibly. That could be a possibility too. Can you, what's, yeah.
It's after 5 o'clock.
Keep going down.
Yeah. I'd have to miss my growth partnership meeting on Thursday, but that's sooner there. I'll have to let you know.
Okay.
Anything else, Stacy?
Yep, a couple other things that I have. Included with my report too was an update from the Mental Health Task Force. Commissioner Bartley is our representative on that. Nikki Eining is the coach, is one of the co-chairs of that group, and she asked me to forward this information. Again, it is, was included with my report onto you to, kind of discusses what the task force has been working on. On there are several legislative updates included with my packet. Actually, the first two are in my, included with my report. The third legislative update from the SDACC, I have passed out this morning to you and is sitting in front of your desk. Those are just how our association is tracking bills, and if there's anything specifically you want me to keep track of, please let me know, and I can do that. The Historical Society did, there was an article in The Window, which was their newsletter, that talked about local government appreciation, and if you can see over here on the right, they specifically mentioned each of you by name in that article. So that was a nice article from them. And then you also received an invitation from them, and it's a ways out, it's in May, on May 27th, and it didn't include a, include a time, so as it gets closer, I'll do some more looking into that. But they're going to be having an open house to celebrate the new building that was constructed over next to the museum over in Volga, the Troy and Horse-Drawn Building. If you haven't been by there yet, that's a really nice building that they put just to the north of the current, the current museum building over there in Volga. But again, that open house is Sunday, May 27th, and it didn't include a time yet, so as it gets closer, I'll track that and find out when that open house is.
It's graduation day for Brookings. I have seniors, so it won't be...
Oh, you won't be there?
I won't be there, no.
And then just some upcoming dates. Well, we had the legislative forum this past week. Youth in Government Day, I think most of you signed up for the breakfast. That's Tuesday, next Tuesday, a week from today, the 13th. That starts at 7:00 a.m. And again, that's a little bit different. It's out at the bowling alley at the Prairie Caffé, out at the bowling alley this year. There is another legislative forum scheduled for Saturday, February 17th, and then offices will be closed on the Monday, the 19th, in honor of the President's Day holiday. And just a reminder, I am leaving tomorrow at noon-ish tomorrow, and I won't be back until next Wednesday. I'm going, I am going...
North?
North, no. I'm going south. I mean, yeah, going to go enjoy some sunshine for a little while, for a few days, so. That's all I have, unless you have anything else for me.
State's attorneys report?
Just like to formally thank you all for appointing me. Also, as Sheriff Marty did talk about, I did meet with Bart and Matt from the sheriff's office, and with our new software that we share with law enforcement, we're looking at tagging the mental health commitments or non-commitments, and then have how they were approached by law enforcement, whether it was criminal, welfare check, city, county, just so we can get some concrete numbers on who's making the contacts. Also, there will be, whether it's someone that comes into my office to talk to us on a personal level, just so that we get some kind of idea of where our services are going, and also just to keep tabs on who's going, who's not going. If we have that police report, we know whether it was not someone that was sent. So it's kind of nice, we're going to use the software to its advantage. Other than that, just really busy and working to keep Brookings County safe.
And then during our transition period, is Mr. Breitman going to be joining us, or are you doing that, or what are we doing?
I think he's actually signed up to be sitting here on Tuesdays, as I have Circuit Court, so.
And welcome to you.
I don't know if he's changed his mind after this meeting. That was our agreement, so.
Commission reports? You want to go first, Larry?
On the 17th of January, a day at the Capitol, rode the bus out and back, had a long day, listened to numerous testimony out there. I did have a break. I went over to the DOT office, talked to some local government people for our bridge program. They had 36 applications, 10 of which of those were for the preservation part, and 26 were for rehab and replace. They hoped to have a decision in April, in 2018. They said there'd be $9 million available, and in 2019, there'd be $15 million available. So it's, looks like it's getting a little better. You talked about wages at the state level. It was interesting going into the office out there, they have a lot of turnover out there, especially in the local government part. They just lost an employee, and two of the people that've been there 30 years were actually doing bills. I mean, daily bills and stuff, so they, they have struggles out there, and they're doing the best they can. They did compliment the county on our use as an engineering firm that we use for our bridge program. They says we usually have no questions at all with the, who we use, and the goes pretty smooth once they get our application, so. January 23rd, attended the Christmas party. I hope all the kids enjoyed. Quite a few people turned out. And on the 29th, I filled in for Commissioner Miller at the Brookings County Outdoor Adventure Center Advisory Board Meeting, making some headway there, trying to get more people to join and signage and such is going up. I think Mr. Kropen will have a little more update there. I did receive a thank you from the Otter Tail people on the substation up by Astoria, on the input that I had up there. Got a hard copy on their, basically their review, local review, and if anybody would like to read it, I have a copy here right, so. Other than that, that's all I have.
Commissioner Kropen?
Okay, 17th, I attended Brookings SDSU Day at the Capitol. Again, very, very good, took a couple buses, and always a good day out at the Capitol, see how things are going. Pretty busy out there, from what I'm seeing, so. January 22nd, was on a conference call with Easton, the company that is a strong supporter of our Outdoor Adventure Center, and that was very good. They have, we're considered an affiliate group, or affiliate facility. They did invest in the facility, and they're, would like to keep that going. And so we're going to be sending our director to an Easton affiliate meeting out in Salt Lake City, and where he will work with Easton on helping facility, and we're hoping we can tap into some grants and some funds that Easton does for their archery facilities throughout the nation. So anyway, that was a very good conference call. He, the gentleman that was on there, you know, said, don't rush into anything, be patient, you know, don't try to fix everything in one swell swoop. So, and I told him, don't worry, it's taking time. We're taking our time. So no, and then the 24th, I had a beta meeting, and that's gone well. They're, they're up on all of their ridership already, and they're just working diligently to try to make ends meet and provide services to as many people that want them and stuff, and so that's going good. 25th, I had a Brookings Health meeting. They're looking at their year-end numbers, and they were in the positive. They made money, which was good, and they are working on expanding. They're going to build, looking at building and moving all of their ambulances over on the facility now and building. They're purchasing a piece of property over there and building ambulance garage, I guess I would say. I'm sure it's going to be more than just a garage, but they're working on that process, and they're just in the final, final punch list of everything else from the facility, so. Doing well, they're doing well. And then again, with Commissioner Jensen, we were at the, on the 29th, at Brookings County Outdoor Adventure Center Advisory Board Meeting, and we are knocking things off and getting the list taken care of. Signage is something that we did get approved. We're excited to get that going, and we've talked to them. We're still working with 4H on their sign of what they need. Sounds like they've changed their requirements. They now want extension on below the sign, below the 4H logo, so they're working on that to get that done, but we got that approval, and floors were redone, looks really good, and so we're getting a lot more activity out there. And then on February 2nd, met with Robert, Director of the OAC, and also Laura and Stacy there, we're talking about job description. There are two part-time employees out there, both resigned last week, both to get full-time positions. Both had wanted full-time positions, but obviously ours are only part-time. One of our persons, Blake, that was there from the beginning, took a full-time position down in Nebraska, and then a recent, most recent one. So we are in the process, and Laura's in the process of looking at applications again, and we wanted to make sure we got our job description where we needed to, and stuff like that, so. We're working on that, and then it's good to get, appreciate to get the volunteer list and all that under there, it's good to get that done. We'll let all those volunteers know that they are in the minutes, and also we'll have that conversation about independent contracting and volunteering and all that kind of stuff, so. Because there may be some volunteers, obviously if they have that ability to teach, that may be entering into independent contracts down the road, so. We will talk about that at the next meeting. All right, that's it.
Commissioner Bartley?
All right. On January 17th, I also attended Brookings Day at the Legislature. It was an interesting day and lots of good conversations. I had sidebar conversations with the Department of Social Services about the future of essential behavioral health, and got some information from them on that. On the 23rd, I attended the county social, an interesting evening, because it was also Bobby and I, it was our wedding anniversary, and I gave her several options for dinner, and she sort of waffled on several of them, and I said, well, we can always go to the county social with pizza and bingo, and that's what she selected, and we went there and she had a great time. She just wanted to report that, but she won't miss it next year. So we had a good time at the social, well-attended. Plus, she won a few bingo prizes and gave away to the kids. On the 24th, the Essential Behavioral Health had a staff meeting in the morning that I attended. That's probably the first staff meeting that, with the staff, the three board members attended, and we got a lot of information from them moving forward with our decision and our reorganization there. We appreciated that staff meeting. And in the afternoon, we had the Joint Jurisdiction meeting, was touched on by Mr. Hill slightly, and they are in the process of going out and inventorying the properties within the joint jurisdiction area, so we know exactly what we're dealing with, and further meetings will narrow that down. On the 25th, my first E911 meeting. It was interesting for me to hear all the information about the 9/11 services and our emergency services people. On the 26th, was the Mental Health Task Force. Seems to be a little pattern here. Mental Health Task Force, and you got a report there from Stacy. She kept the minutes, and it was a good report. That's exactly what took place. February 1st was the Government Affairs meeting, discussed some of the legislative bills before the legislature. We didn't have any that affected the counties discussed, so I'm going to have to look at those next time, make sure that they get those discussed. On the 2nd, we had the Essential Behavioral Health Retreat. The retreat's purpose was to finalize our decision on how we're going to move forward with reorganization. A decision was made, and we'll be entering into negotiations to see if we can get that accomplished here very quickly or very shortly. Today, I'm going to go to the South Dakota Pipeline Association meeting after we get done with this meeting, learn all things good about pipelines and disasters with pipelines, and the good things about pipelines. And that would be the end of my report. Thank you.
Thank you. Since we last met, I have met several times with Terry and Bob and Richard and Luke to work on our revision of the zoning ordinances, and contrary to what Mr. Hill says, I don't think it's going to take us until 2020 to get them done. I feel like we've been making some progress in the last few weeks and that we're moving forward on that. We are, we came up to the piece on the wind energy towers, and we decided that we were going to wait until probably the end of February to look at that, because there's a lot of legislation going on right now out in Pier regarding wind energy towers and reclamation issues, and things that our ordinance, I think at least, should consider, and we want to see what the state statute's going to say going forward. I did have some communication with Representative Tim Reed regarding the bill that's out in Pier on non-conforming uses, and how that will be impacted by zoning, and expressed my concern to him. What that bill does is it says that something that's a non-conforming use, when a county or municipality changes a parcel of land for zoning purposes, that that use gets to continue. And that's what the statute says right now, but the current statute says, but if you go a year and you don't take advantage of that use, then your non-conforming use expires and you go under the new zoning rule. And the new legislation takes that out and doesn't put a time period on that. So if we have an area where we've got a non-conforming use because we rezoned and we had a mine or a feedlot, or, you know, a million different things that are non-conforming uses that are in our ordinance, and 20 years later, somebody wants to come in and resume that again, the way that law's written, they could do that. And I'm thinking that wasn't their intent, and we've talked about that, and I think there might be some amendments coming on that. We'll see. On January 25th, I attended the E91 meeting, and other people have already reported on that. I went to the county social on January 23rd. There was a good turnout, and I thank Bob and everybody else on our staff that put the work in. I think Michelle did some work on that and other people, and it was, it was a nice event. The Joint Jurisdiction Committee met on January 24th, and one of the things that we're talking about is that boundary, where the joint jurisdiction boundary is going to be, and that kind of tied in with the meeting I had on January 29th. As you know, I serve... As you know, I serve as your representative on the City Comprehensive Master Plan Advisory Committee. And in their master plan, they had a statement that there could be no large lot development south of 207th Street. And it was a mandatory statement. And at the, the Comprehensive Advisory Plan meeting, I expressed my concern about that. And I said, "Where those types of rules fall into play should be determined by the Joint Jurisdiction Committee" as opposed to the City Comprehensive Master Plan. Because if the joint juris, if the city passes this plan, and then joint jurisdiction makes a different recommendation that the city agrees with, the city will have to amend its comprehensive master plan. Or I don't want there to be a dispute on joint jurisdiction between the city and the county because there's a mandatory rule in the comp plan for the city. And I, and, and after a considerable conversation, that wording came back that it would discourage large lot development south of 207th. And I think that's fine. That gives us enough wiggle room so the Joint Jurisdiction Committee can do what it wants. But on February 12th, I want to be sure I'm telling you that right. There's going to be a, a public open house that the city's having on their comprehensive plan. And I would encourage everybody to go to that and to look at that comp plan and maybe look at how it's dealing with the joint jurisdiction area, and particularly that comment on 207th. There's going to be two meetings. One is, I believe, over the lunch hour, and another one at 5:15. And it's going to be here in this room. And, and I just, because this is, the city's comp plan does, does impact on the joint jurisdiction area. I would encourage you to go and, and maybe if you agree with me that, that we should, the city's comp plan should allow the Joint Jurisdiction Committee to make the decisions regarding zoning in the comp plan. I think that would be a good thing to comment on. Then on January 24th, Terry and Stacy and Laura and I and Stephanie met to discuss issues with the state's attorney's office. And I didn't know, Terry, should we be planning another meeting for another personnel issue, or?
Yes, I thought I was going to maybe schedule it when Stephanie's back.
And when Stacy gets back?
Yes.
Okay, perfect.
Yep, so I'll be sending out dates.
Sounds good. On January 25th, I went to the Brookings Housing Meeting. That was very interesting. That was my first meeting. And I did look at our ordinance. I think I talked about this at, at our, at our last meeting. I looked at our ordinance, and our ordinance is kind of out of date. And then we have a second ordinance that says we're going to rely on the city housing office to do the Section 8 stuff. Then we went to look for the city ordinance on that. City doesn't have a housing committee. So Stacy's kind of track, trying to track down some information. We don't meet again until April, I think it is. And we're going to come up with a, a new proposed ordinance that'll deal with combining those two things and getting them done right. We might have to rely on our new deputy state's attorney to help with some of that, so. But it was, it was interesting. Uh, I went to the open house at the OAC on January 26th. And when I was there, Commissioner Bartley and the sheriff were there and, and our staff, but that was, that was it. I do have to say, the floors are amazing. Whoever did that work on the floors, the building just looked fantastic. And that was the first time I was out there. After the shelving, the storage was built upstairs. And you never know, that was an add-on. It really looks nice. So you guys are doing a great job with that. My legal assistant went out that evening with her two kids, and they shot archery and did the BB guns and all of that. And they had an absolutely fantastic time. And if we're ever going to do another open house like that, there are some other groups that I think we could reach out to. Mary Kidwiler is, is doing some work for the Boy Scouts right now. She said the Boy Scouts would love an invitation to come out. And, and I know the youth mentoring program would like an opportunity to do that. So there are some other people we could reach out to, to bring some kids in on an open house. Then on the 30th, I met with the mayor of Aurora and, and Dick. And we talked about that highway ordinance that we passed today, and, and I did not know that there's a truck that they can just drive out there that does that measurement without somebody getting out a tape measure. So that, that was kind of interesting, pretty cool. Look at the technology. Went to the legislative forum on Saturday. This room was filled. There were not enough places for people to sit. There was a really good turnout. It was a, a great event. And I went to the pop-up market done by the BEDC on Saturday. There was not such a good turnout, but the weather wasn't really nice, so we'll see how that goes, and that would be my report. Any questions? Then I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
I'm moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, thank you all.